Let's start the second session of the meeting. Welcome deputations and individuals for attending the second session of the meeting. You may choose the channel you require. Please put on your headphones. Zero is the floor, one is Cantonese, and two is English. And I'd like to remind members, remind deputations and individuals that what you say here is not protected by the Legislative Council Powers and Privileges Ordinance. I will ask you to speak one by one, and you have three minutes each. When the bell rings, you will have to stop. Please be as concise as possible. If you have anything to add, you may do so by way of written submission. I'd like to ask first Ms. Siu Sao Yin.
I'm from the community, the Community College, and the Lingnan Institute of Further Education of the Lingnan University. After the first Hong Kong DSE, there are about forty-five thousand students who have, and a large number of them have met the minimum requirement of university education. And about thirty thousand of them eventually get a university place. And about twenty thousand of Hong Kong DSE graduates eligible for associate degree. We are two self-financing education institutions. Similar to other institutions, we have encountered the same problems. And we would like to meet, we would like to respond to demand and to provide quality, to provide an education programs for students who are eligible. This is the co- double co-ordia. There are great challenges, great challenges faced by the sub-degree program offers. Yesterday, the report on Ningnan University inquiry was published. The Board of Directors tasked the principal or the president of the university to remedy the situation. Proposal to improve, of improvement measures will have to be submitted shortly. They will, they will make arrangements for admission, given their resources. There are already clear indicators and guidelines about the number of admissions, and they reported to the Education Bureau of places of sub-degree programs of the two institutions, and we can in, put in more resources on student services. We will also enhance our quality assurance. So we have a quality assurance procedure to review the teaching effectiveness and also teaching facilities and to monitor the quality of the program. We will also improve the admission procedure and arrangements for teaching resources and also communication with students. At this stage, the two institutions have fully commissioned their teaching facilities. And we've more or less completed recruitment of our teaching staff. We have sufficient resources to meet demand. The report was released yesterday. We hope that this will draw an end to the incident. We'll continue to provide quality education program. Thank you. Next, Mr. Chan Chong Yau. DAB said that education will take you out of poverty. But now, if you, if you done study, you will be poorer because as soon as you graduate, you will have to repay the student loan. Quality assurance of sub-degree programs. What is it? How? As you all know, that Polytechnic University Subdegree Program have a, have a low GPA. The relevant quality assurance bodies, how do they monitor quality? This is not, this is not a time for questions. And you're finished with what you said? Yes. Next is the Dr. Lauchet Lam.
I have extracted from the submission of Kaplan Business and Accountants School. I will present only some major important points. Kaplan is new to the non-profit education sector, but we have quite a long history in offering private education programs in Hong Kong. However, leveraging its fifty years specialist experience in delivering high education and accounting courses worldwide and decade-long expertise in training ten thousand accountancy enrollment every year to serve Hong Kong. Kaplan has well established itself as a leading local education provider eager to further expand its contribution to nurturing emerging local tenant. Kaplan had applied and successfully passed accreditation by HKCAVQ in June 2012, a nonprofit community college, KBAS, and a high diploma in business administration program. In response to the Hong Kong Education Board's commitment to promoting quality education, KBAS will strive to improve students' learning experience with innovation. Substantial amounts have been invested for improving teaching and learning, campus development, and library resources. Owing to the recent incident of overenrollments, we have a very difficult time in recruiting students. And consequently, our approved academic plan could not be rolled out totally, and we have incurred substantial financial losses, let alone as a result, the deception of many Hong Kong DSE school leavers. To support the proper growth of a young self-financed institution such as ours, strong government resources support is paramount. They are as follows. One, better monitoring of all self-financed sub-degree providers, both from the UGC-funded institutions and the private sectors. Two, guarantee a fair level playing field for all self-financed providers. Three, develop one application system for sub-degree sectors similar to the one of JUPUS. Four, continue to provide land grants and interest-free loans for campus development. Five, provide startup grants for the newly established institutions. Six, increase the quotas for senior degree places for articulations. Thank you to Yimai Kaplan to express his views.
Okay, Siu Chu. Mr. Siu Chu Kit. Many deputations have already commented on students incurring loans and so on and the question of over enrollment. So the associate degree graduates find it difficult to articulate to a degree program. And actually, the associate degree graduates unemployment rate is even higher than those of primary school graduates. So we're under three types of pressure. One student had already committed suicide. I like, what I like, I like to express my concern to the secretary. I don't know where he is now. Our GDP, the total amount of GDP is committed on education is three point seven percent. UNESCO recommends six percent. So I don't know where the, the shortfall has gone to. When we look at the average sub-rented degree program, it's ten percent in Hong Kong. The average is twenty-six percent. That's the global average. The resources allocated to education, we rank a hundred and twenty-three in the world. We even worse than Indonesia. For the other four Asian dragons, of course, we are lagging behind. The secretary talked about the resources, commit allocated to resources. He said, he said the number has been increased to four thousand. Actually, they've saved, been making saving for two years already. After students have studied for the sub-degree program for two years, supposedly a student should, should get a four-year, you know, subsidy. I don't know where the shortfall of has gone to. In ninety-five, ninety-six, the government laid down the target of fourteen thousand five hundred subsidized university places. They've only increased it to fifteen thousand recently. And that rate of increase is really a very, very, very minimal. Even a primary school student can, can say that. And the secretary said that there has been substantial increase. And he said, he said that ninety percent of the tertiary education is subvented by the government. That obviously is not true for, he said that there are thirty-five thousand subvented places. There are another thirty thousand which are not subvented, and that's bigger than thirty thousand. And you say that you've achieved ninety percent. I think someone would have teach him, you know, basic arithmetic. And he said that this is, all these are not his fault because she's new to the post. But if the problem persists, does it mean that if the other students like, would also jump to the death? And shouldn't the secretary step down? That's all I want to say. Next, we have Professor Yun from the Polytechnic University. Thank you. I like to comment on three points and also about the situation at Hong Kong Polytechnic University. First of all, quality supervision. And secondly, our student enrollment for this year. And thirdly, prospects for our graduates. The Hong Kong Polytechnic University and the School of Continuous and Professional Education is operate on a financially autonomous basis. It coordinates HACA and SPEED. HKCC provides associate degree places. SPEED provides for articulation courses and other continuous professional education courses. The CCA will coordinate these two units, and we have a set of stringent quality assurance mechanism, which is actually exactly the same as the system adopted by the, for the undergraduate program. The vetting and the planning follow exactly the procedures of the Polytechnic University. Other than that, we are also governed by the JQR-C. And the, the QAC would also assess our, you know, articulation courses for associate degree programs. I've been a dean in the undergraduate department, and I, I think that there's no difference as far as quality students are concerned between the undergraduate and the sub-degree programs. Under CPC, we have more than ten thousand full-time students, both parents and students. Really have a lot of confidence in our school, so that we're able to, to make the achievements. We also have clear guidelines governing the number of student enrollments. Our management will, through a long-term development strategy, map out or decide on the tentative student numbers. Then according to following the three-year program, this will be submitted to our board. And once approved, then we would confirm the number of student intakes every year. And we'll further fine-tune that number for SPEED every year. And this will be further approved by the Academic Council. In twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, our enrollment exercise is the same. We, you know, our student enrollment was below the target of five percent. Regarding prospects for our graduates, I think our graduates have very good prospects for further education. I'm sorry, the time is up. Dr. Jung Chung Nam.
Educator, I always believe that one of the important elements in the sacred profession is to care and to do good for the society. From this conviction, I shall present my view. I shall first talk about the land provision policy for the degree programs. The current land policy as we know it is non-transparent, vague, generic, and sometimes controversial. It is vital that the private education institutions have a clear and unambiguous land policy to make long-term planning to bring the best education benefit to the society. Hong Kong is a rich society, but among its seven million citizens, there are more than one million poor. Therefore, I object to use land to attract overseas education institutions that charge outrageous tuition way beyond our struggling middle class and poor can afford. I rather have the land goes to housing project that can benefit middle class and poor than to use them to attract overseas education institutions. My second point is regarding the private self-financed institutions are over-regulated, but the self-financed programs of UGC institutions are under-regulated. Private institutions must spend more than ten years to acquire a limited self-accreditation privilege, and this privilege is to be renewed every five years. Therefore, private institutions must devote precious resources and effort to this renewing process conducted by Hong Kong CAAVQ instead of using the, the resources on enhancement. UGC institutions enjoys a broader self-accreditation privilege that needs no renewing. And the UGC institutions are allowed to use this privilege to set up self-financed program without Hong Kong CAAVQ's scrutiny. And this situation can harbor abusing. And evidence show such abusing already taking place in the sub-degree programs. My third point is regarding the illogical intake and tuition practice to enroll mainland students for degree programs. UGC institution gets twenty percent quota. So I'll rest this one. I'll, I'll send my reading.
Okay.
Thank you.
Zhe Zhi Qi Yin. Hi, thank you, Chairman. I'm the chairman of Donggui District, Zhe Zhi Qi. Um, actually, within a few minutes, it's hard to explain the specific issues. But I want to share with all the government officials, municipal officials, or if it's other social workers, to share what we can reflect on our educational的理念. Um, I know it's a bit inconvenient for the administration.
Our education failures. We talk about primary, secondary education, tertiary education, so on. But looking at the basic nature of education, for example, we're talking about the quality of tertiary education and prospects for our graduates. Then we have to ask, what do we mean by quality? Are we talking about academic quality? The quality of academic program or the quality in terms of the skills to, to find jobs? I've heard from many employers that about the difficulties they've encountered when they try to recruit staff. It's not a question of whether the candidates have the qualifications, but rather, these young people don't have the right attitude. They may not be punctual at work, and there's some problem with the attitudes, and they lack analytical skills. Are these the things that we are looking for? We are now debating about funding for education and so on and so forth. Have we considered which department or party should be responsible? Is it only something for the government to, to do? If we don't discuss these issues, well, very often, the students are not prepared when they enter the university, but likewise, they're not fully prepared when they graduate for employment. So is it because there are fundamental flaws in our basic education? We're now discussing questions related to funding and so on, but we never told our students what our community, what, what sort of person our community, what are the students become? Should they only be required to have good exam results? Or should they be learned, trained how to plan for the future? Do we need to go back to basics and discuss these concepts? Let's, you know, clarify these concepts before we discuss how we can improve our university education and turning it into an industry. Professor Fong. I'm the acting president of the Hang Seng School of Management. I'd like to talk about three points. First of all, developing tertiary education is the best way to alleviate poverty. And secondly, I'd like to confirm the government's policy in assisting the private self-funded institutions. And thirdly, the government can provide a platform for fair competition about, for the private self-funded institutions. In Hong Kong, we are most concerned about the question of poverty. Our Gini ratio is at a very high level. So the government has set up a poverty commission, which means it is a commission to tackle, commission. I think the Chinese title is more, can more accurately reflect the objective or the purpose. To tackle poverty, I don't think we can rely on handouts. The most fundamental way to tackle combat poverty is to train people, to equip them, who are, so that they can stand on their own. As to how do we help people to help themselves? Many studies have found that the most effective method is by promoting education, especially tertiary education. In a knowledge-based economy, just relying on your secondary and primary education credentials will not be, it will not be enough. You need, you'll only be able to find good jobs if you have a degree, so that you'll be able to find, you know, a good job. So unless the SRG has plans to massively increase the number of places in the UGC-funded institutions for the self-financed tertiary institutions, they are going to play a more and more important role. Public and private universities competing, you know, I think, I, that, there's been a long history of that in the West. And many Asian countries, this has also proven to be effective. Taiwan and South Korea are good examples. In Brazil, one of the BRIC, so-called BRIC countries, the economy is developing very well, and private universities actually outnumber the publicly funded universities. If we don't want to lag behind in this knowledge-based economy, the SRG must, you know, support the development of self-financing private institutions. The government's measures, including free, granting of free land and so on and so forth, scholarship and so on, should be recognized. But as the privately operated institutions are facing difficulties, we want the subsidy to increase. We want a fair platform of competition. One of the basic problem is in terms of academic freedom. Publicly funded institutions can accredit their own programs. Whereas for the private institutions, they have to go through complicated procedures before they will get new assistance. We would like to confirm the, the work done by the HKCAVQ, but we want it to be more flexible so that it can provide better assistance to the privately operated tertiary institutions.
Today, as a concerned student, and may I say, I'm glad to be given the opportunity because I believe that formalized education is one of the most important aspects in a person's life. It teaches people how to become adults and how to become productive members of their society. I believe that education is an integral factor in any well-functioning community and any prosperous economy. Therefore, any government or organization that wishes to improve the quality of education in this country should be commended for their efforts. As a result, this government's plans to subsidize private universities and to grant them land is a commendable policy. It is a commendable policy despite the fact that it represents this government's value to understand the concepts of free market economics. It would seem that the government believes that throwing money at an industry will simply make it better, when in fact, quite the opposite is true. Subsidizing private universities will simply make them weak and uncompetitive. It will provide a second-rate education to Hong Kong's first-rate students. It will make universities a bureaucratic institution that would rather wait for another handout than provide a quality education, an education that Hong Kong students deserve. It is a commendable policy, even though it displays how clearly dire the property market has become in Hong Kong, when a university must beg for property rights only for the government to take them away to build public housing flats because the government has so poorly managed the property market here. They will do this in Kennedy Town, and they will do it again all over Hong Kong. It seems that the government cares more about feeding its flooded property market than helping out its students. It is a commendable policy despite the fact that it will turn universities into student factories, where the object of the organization is to get as many people through the doors as possible, no matter what the quality of education is. Harming students such as myself, who are promised jobs at the end of our university degrees after all the fees and all the hard work, only to find out that because the government fails to understand the basic concepts of supply and demand, there is no job waiting at the end of the student's degree. Ladies and gentlemen, the concept of helping to educate our society, our children are poor through subsidy and government land grants is a commendable policy, but it is not the right policy. To follow this path will simply harm the people that we are trying to help. I would recommend that the government focus its policy on providing the best quality of education, not the best quantity. Subsidy and government land grants do not provide the best level of education in this city. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Next, we have from the Tonghua College, Professor Thomas Wong.
Thank you. I'd like to share with you the experience of the Tonghua College regarding the experience of over enrollment. We don't think over enrollment is a major problem. The problem is whether or not we have sufficient resources and teachers to ensure quality. That is more important. In Hong Kong, ever since we have these self-financed courses, the original idea was that we should provide diversified and flexi- flexible pathway with multiple entry and exits for DSE graduates. But we found out that recently, people only finish with a associate degree, and there is, and there is only a single articulation option. But I don't think our community require so many university graduates. There is a demand for other so-called middle skills. For the self-financing courses, we have to follow the original intention. That is, how many of these courses should be part of the collision courses? What, how many will only serve to be skill-training courses? And secondly, for the self-funded courses, some deputations already alluded to the importance of quality assurance. And now we are relying on the HKCAAVQ, but they only look at structure issues. In the course of teaching and also in terms of learning outcomes, that's very difficult to assess. And I believe we need to do more in those areas. We now have two standards, the HACAAVQ and the UGC. We, I think we need to have a standardized criterion, and I believe there's a need to merge these two institutions into one. The same for the question of enrollment. UGC has the JUPUS system. For the self-funded programs, of course, these institutions have made many conditional offers because, so if the enrollment system could be standardized, then I think the problem of over enrollment could be resolved. Finally, I'd like to talk about our structure issue. For self-financing institutions, they have the board, and the structure is different from the UGC-funded institutions. And I think we need to take a look at that. The, the board of governors of UGC-funded institutions are very representative. The government will appoint members to this board. But that's not the same for these self-financing institutions. Thank you.
Dr. Poposika. Thank you. I represent Yuchun Community College and would like to comment on three areas. The first one is on the development and regulation of the self-financing post-secondary education sector. Our colleges of the view that the development of the self-financing post-secondary education sector should be supported by regulation which should be consistent. should be supported by regulation, which should be consistently applied to all providers in the field, should be clear and flexible. One of the major areas to be addressed is improvement of the quality assurance system, including its monitoring and enforcing procedures. Special attention should be given to the issue of ensuring that the independent self-financing institutions and the self-financing institutions affiliated with the U G C funded universities are fulfilling commonly established quality standards and requirements. For example, as all of us know, the independent self-financing institutions undergo a rigorous accreditation and validation process conducted by the H K C A A V Q. This process provides a guarantee for the quality of the programs and the related supporting system in place in the institutions. However, the process is time-demanding and in that respect imposes a restriction on the ability of those institutions to react quickly on some changing needs and developments in the field. On the other hand, the self-financing institutions affiliated with the U G C funded universities do not go through H K C A A V Q accreditation. And on that way, they have the advantage of completing much faster than necessary quality assurance process internally. On top of this, there are also questions on how well these institutions comply with their own internal approval process. For example, as we have heard from the, from the public, those institutions admitted students to their programs in two thousand twelve thirteen, even before those programs were approved internally and which were even not listed on the Hong Kong Qualifications Register. Another question is whether the minimum entry requirements of those new programs are in line with the ones defined by the revised common descriptors of the Hong Kong Qualifications Framework. In this respect, our colleges of view that measures and systems should be taken that these situations will be improved and will not happen again in future. The second area will be on over enrollment of students and remedial measures. As all of us mentioned in so many instances, this, there were very negative impact in many aspects. One of the aspects, of course, was that the large numbers of over-enrolled students affected negatively the quality of teaching and learning in those institutions and also affected negatively the enrollment outcomes in many other institutions. In this respect, we expect that measures should be taken to ensure that such situation will not happen again in future. And the last area is on the prospects, the last statement, please. Our colleges of view that transparent guidelines should be established and enforced for providing admission quotas for the bachelor degree programs of the U G C funded universities, for qualified graduates of associate degree and higher diploma programs of the non-U G C affiliated self-financing education.
Okay, thank you for your speaking.
Thank you very much.
Next, uh, how way is Meng Chan先生?
Thank you. Next one, Hong Kong Institute of Education's Chris Mo. Based on our strategic development plan oh nine to twelve, our institution has been transformed into an education-oriented research institution. Based on our preset goals and strategies, since two thousand nine, we have made remarkable achievements. And we are also launching, we have launched PhD and master's programs in various disciplines. Therefore, operating self-financed associate degrees is not one of our development goals. The Hong Kong I A T has considered, you know, the quality of students, articulation, employment prospects and so forth, financial visibility and so forth. In before, because of that, we decided in two thousand eleven, decided to phase out gradually from providing associate degree programs. And after making, after having made the decision by two thousand eleven and two thousand eleven, we have actually scaled down the operations of our continuing professional education. Apart from fulfilling the contracts of our staff and to ensuring the quality of programs so that students can go graduate on time. In two thousand twelve thirteen, our school had stopped recruiting for six associate degree programs. The remaining four associate degree programs that are in operation from two, from July twenty twelve has been handed over to a new associate degree department under the university. This is just a transitional arrangement. Hong Kong I A T plans that in the short term, it will completely stop offering self-financed courses. In two thousand twelve thirteen, H K I E D recruitment of associate degree students compared to the previous year actually has come down. In two thousand thirteen fourteen, our associate degree and high diploma places will be further reduced to below two hundred fifty. Along, H K I E A T has stringent quality assurance mechanism to over associate degree programs. We actually, because of our self-accrediting status, evaluate our quality of courses. And C A A V Q also actually credits the qualifications of our courses. Okay, thank you. Next one, Temlock K. Self-financed education has been around for ten years. And in two thousand five, our alliance was set up. But since then, we have heard one scandal after another over the sector. Quality assurance and so forth, there are all sorts of issues that have come up. The Lingnan over enrollment issue was latest. And it shows the lack of effective monitoring of associate degree courses. And students are the biggest victims. Our alliance therefore asked for the setting up of a unified statutory independent monitoring body. The Pauli U actually knowing about Lingnan, knowing about the lack of resources, continue to, I mean, Lingnan University continued to over enroll, knowing that it did not have the adequate resources. And the teacher ratio in some courses even doubled, that allowed by the Education Bureau. What's shocking is that the继续education School of Lingnan also recruited students for courses that have not yet been approved. And in the I pass website, you couldn't find even information of those courses. It shows that these self-financed courses have long lacked effective monitoring. And the absence of a statutory monitoring body makes monitoring even weaker. Actually, we can only rely on UCOM. The, you know, quality assurance committees from under UCOM to maintain monitoring of quality. But this committee is a body composing or composed of university internal members. So we have people carrying out all this among themselves. So the provision of not approved courses show that the joint committee is not taking the task of monitoring seriously. In two thousand twelve, the Education Bureau commissioned U G C to carry out a study and to look into the prospects of setting up a body to monitor sub-degree courses. And yet, no such body has come into being. And we have heard ever since various complaints about quality. And U G C's report in oh eight ten proposed that the government set up a statutory monitoring organization. And the government has not done anything in response, nor carried out any of its own study. So it shows that this government is total rubbish. The should, the sanitary body should not be delayed anymore. Okay, next one is Vincent Chang from D A B. Yes, over the past decade, in order to enhance young people's education, it has largely expanded tertiary education. Back in two thousand nine thousand places, the number has risen to thirty thousand now. But the quality of courses varies widely. You know, some institutions were found to have over enrolled and teaching resources were very inadequate and so forth. The latest statistics from the Education Bureau, that is, the actually number of degree places, a number about thirty seven thousand. And yet, some institutions offer forty associate degree programs with only one student. But some students are over enrolled by more than fourteen hundred. So it shows the wide gap in the quality of programs and popularity of various programs. Studies show that associate degree graduates holders find that their qualifications have not been well recognized. And they, their job prospects are not better than secondary school graduates. And a register survey found that the graduates of some institutions could not move on to further studies nor find a job. Send Lingnan universities, continuing education schools graduates have employment rate of under twenty or just around twenty-five percent. So this is worrying. Are we predicting graduates that meet the needs of society? So the actually big expansion resulted in this big confusion now. Well, students in government-funded places enjoy cheaper tuition costs and much richer campus and better recognized courses. And yet, self-financed students are regarded as second-class students and tuitions are higher and recognitions are also very limited. So we need to address the problem of polarization of resources. D A B has four proposals. One, we want to enhance the qualification of students and recognition of students in Hong Kong, recognition of graduates in Hong Kong. And the government should enhance promoting the qualification of associate degrees and also promote the employer's recognition of such qualifications. And it should also try to adequate degree and sub-degree places for young people here. It should also study the possibility of tuition subsidy or vouchers to reduce the financial burden of many students. And thirdly, D A B thinks that we can actually help associate degree holders or graduates to move on to tertiary study on the mainland. And their job prospects may increase as well. Thank you. Next one, Ms. Wong Yuen Ling. Well, three minutes is really too short. And a lot of the people speaking have provided a lot of details and data. So I'm going to focus on three broad areas now. Our education union actually attaches importance to studying the development of education here. Which is for on this topic of self-financed education, I'd like to address three broad areas. One is the orientation of programs, the other is enrollment, and thirdly is prospects. Just then, people said, you know, mentioned about the various issues. I think and over enrollment itself is an issue because you never know after you've enrolled whether you have the adequate resources to support the population. So no, anyone who says that enrollment is not an issue, over enrollment is not an issue, is only paying attention to the fees collected. Looking at two thousand ten to two thousand eleven, the difference, the ratio between funded degree places and self-financed degree places of the eighteen nine thousand two hundred places, subdegrees make up sixty-two thousand. So the eight U G C funded institutions actually are promoting or expanding sub-degree places in line with the policy under Tong Chi Kua to raise the ratio, a percentage of young people having tertiary education. They are just doing this in order to make profits. Instead, they should have provided more degree places. As I said before, recognition of subdegrees has been a issue of much public attention. Some universities told me in person that associate degree courses, be honest with you, is actually cheating. This is something that I was told by a university professor. It's a kind of actually cheating. Why? Because the associate degree programs are modeled after degree programs. And yet, they are actually a strange genre because it has not got the same recognition. And it's like a kind of offense in terms of the qualifications, recognition it receives. And it prepares graduates for some low-level jobs. And yet, degree graduates are entitled to more professional jobs. So students through associate degrees are actually getting some kind of negative asset by doing these sub-degree courses. So we need to look at the direction of associate degrees. If you take this seriously, you should increase the amount of tuitions in general education and language and reduce proportion of business training. And we also need to have unified monitoring of the, of both sectors. If you, you need to, but of course, it's best to have less regulations. But given what's happening, we need to act to have unified monitoring. The next thing is secretary needs to step down immediately, otherwise we can't see any solution to the problem. We have to appoint educators to the position to bring about reform in the sector. Yeah, please speak directly to the mic, but you don't have to talk very close to it, otherwise you will create, you know, nuisance. Please respect the rule to stop when you have to. Next one is Mr. Justin Chin. Good morning, I'm from Civic Party. Over the years, whether it's funded degree places or funded associate degree or subdegree places, they can far from satisfy the need for, of students. Those students who want to continue to study have no choice but to do the self-financed degree or subdegree courses. With the new senior secondary curriculum in place, many students who are qualified to do tertiary education are looking for places. So monitoring of self-financed education will become increasingly important as a result. Many self-financed institutions, however, have been found to have over enrolled, arousing much public concern. So some institutions are charging a lot more fees than others, causing a lot of burden on students. If students, because of enrollment or lack of monitoring, are forced to study in an unfavorable environment or if there are wide gaps in the quality of programs, then this is fair and fair to the students and their families concerned. Therefore, Civic Party thinks that the government is definitely obliged to come up with comprehensive policy to monitor various self-financed subdegree programs. Well, we only have three minutes each. People have said a lot about the problems of the self-financed sector. I'm not going to further detail. Please refer to our submission. Another thing I'd like to point out is the existing monitoring, monitoring is really, really lax. The wide gap in quality of the programs actually further undermines the public recognition of the qualifications. So the, the graduates actually have little choices of jobs when, when they leave school. We urge the government, therefore, to set up stringent standards for vetting self-financed subdegree courses, including monitoring the requirements or strengthening the standards for campuses and also requiring self-financed institutions to be subject to random checks to make sure that their courses and class instructions are in conformance with requirements. Ultimately, you must understand that why do we have all the problems now? The basic reason is because the funded places is in dire shortage. Therefore, students have to choose or look for other channels. And the lack of regulations ultimately would only benefit profitable and scrupulous operators who are there to squeeze students for profits. And profits, and students will continue to be put under heavy financial burden. The government needs to be more stringent in its monitoring. And there is a need for increase in funded degree places. Thank you.
Yeah, sir.
Next. Mrs. Celia Chan.
Billianess, Bill Gates, founder of Microsoft and notable philanthropist, and Hong Kong's own Lee Kai Shing, a self-made man who lifted himself out of poverty to become Asia's richest man. What do all these individuals have in common? None of them completed their tertiary education, yet despite this are wildly successful by any person's standards and their contribution to society is immeasurable. As a society, we need to start acknowledging that the path of formal education is not the only path for self-development and achievement. As a society, we need to start acknowledging that the path of formal education is not the only path for self-development and achievement. Hong Kong societal attitudes towards education is frankly disturbing. With its culture of rote learning, exam pressure, and fierce competition, which often begins in the early ages of primary school and continues through high school and university, we have to ask ourselves, are the young people of Hong Kong with its with their obsessive focus on getting a university education really becoming individuals with unique perspectives and contributions to society? The problems of over enrollment and subpar quality in Hong Kong's private education sector are serious concerns. However, these problems are the result of misplaced educational attitudes in Hong Kong, which equates higher education with future employment and success. In order to solve this problem, we need to shift the focus of getting a edu university education and refute the assumption that a university education is compulsory for employment. The solution now is not to increase university places at publicly-funded universities. To be frank, a university undergraduate degree is only valuable in the eyes of employers if they remain competitive and selective. Nor is the solution to impose further government regulations on privately um private education sectors. This fundamentally violates um private institutions' freedom of choice. The government at the government now should focus on the focus on giving the young people of Hong Kong diverse opportunities to learn beyond just a university education. Funding should be directed towards developing and investing in alternate education paths that encourage creativity and innovation. A successful society is not measured by its number of university graduates. And the Hong Kong people need to ask themselves whether they want to be a nation of well-trained robots or a community of thinkers, innovators, and creators. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Preiser.
SCAD is the university for creative careers. And we are unique within the landscape of education in Hong Kong in that SCAD delivers only art and design programs for our students. In our third year, we are currently at a student population of three-hundred-and-thirty, with sixty percent being local, forty percent being international, with fifteen countries represented, studying across twenty-one degree programs. Our bachelor's and master's degrees are accredited both in the United States and here locally through the HKCAAVQ. As a testament to the quality of SCAD's education and being the university for creative careers, a hundred-and-sixty SCAD students, more than half, are already interning or working with well-known companies such as Mattel Asia, Hong Kong Disneyland, and Lane Crawford. SCAD Hong Kong started operations in twenty-ten, investing a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-million Hong Kong of our own capital and renovating and transforming the North Caloon Magistrate Building. This cost is not a burden to our current students. Rather, this investment was important for SCAD to make as it shows our dedication to the long-term success of Hong Kong. With regards to issues related to self-financing post-secondary education in Hong Kong, our views are laid down in paragraphs twenty to twenty-five of our written submission, but to stress some key points. To date, SCAD is solely financed by our own capital, continually investing in the quality of our programs, but we are also aware of the variety of financing schemes provided by the government. Although SCAD has yet to take advantage of these schemes, we are very encouraged to see that the Hong Kong government offers the various programs for institutions like SCAD and hope that these programs continue to be supported and provided for. After listening to forty-six presentations, it is very apparent to me that SCAD is the newcomer within this community. But it is also apparent that fairness and equity would benefit all self-financing institutions as it directly relates to enriching our students' experience and delivering high-quality programs. Ordinances, regulations, subsidies, and financing schemes need to be consistent and equally available to provide flexibility in the management of operations, recruitment of students, local and non-local, and the delivery of curriculum in order for the education that all self-financing institutions provide to remain relevant and competitive for our students' job placement, ultimately benefiting Hong Kong as it grows to be a creative hub. SCAD, the University of Creative Careers, thanks the panel for the time, inclusion, and attention.
Next, Ms. Wong. The Joint Quality Review Committee
Assurance Body, set up by the Heads of Universities Committee, formed by the eight self-accrediting institutions under UGC to oversee the quality assurance processes of their self-financed subdegree programs. The establishment of JQRC was an initiative to ensure comparability between the two quality assurance systems, overseeing the self-accrediting and non-self-accrediting institutions. JQRC is independent from both government and the institutions. The governing board is composed of senior university representatives from outside the colleges and units offering self-financed subdegree programs. The JQRC Academic Council includes non-JQRC members. Review panels include external members from non-JQRC institutions, from commerce and industry, and professional bodies. All these ensure that reviews are conducted independently. Comparability in standard is ensured by having members from the Education Bureau and HKCAAVQ sitting on the JQRC Board of Directors and its academic council. We are fully aware that improvements can always be made. The current quality assurance system has worked very well during the past six years. Such as having quality assurance bodies with separate responsibilities is an effective division of labor. It recognizes the difference in maturity of institutions and the need for different approaches in quality assurance. The system respects the self-accrediting status and academic autonomy of institutions. Self-accreditation is a recognition of the maturity and achievement of an institution. It is a feature which underpins the concept of academic freedom and protection from outside interference. The UGC report has recommended establishing a new quality assurance body comprising HKCAAVQ, JQRC, and the Quality Assurance Council. While in the long term, it is ideal and achievable to integrate different quality assurance approaches into one single body, we need to consider the present stage of development. The existence of two groups of institutions, the self-accrediting institutions, which have a longer history and established internal quality assurance systems, and the newer non-self-accrediting institutions. With the growth of private degree-awarding institutions and many other private providers offering lower-level programs, it is appropriate to maintain this distinction between two types of institutions for the near future whilst planning for future integration of the different methodologies for quality assurance. This would best be achieved by rationalizing the functions currently performed by each of those agencies, perhaps by operating an oversight body which coordinates the activities for some period rather than simply turning the whole process over to any one of those bodies as it presently exists. We have a number of suggestions for improvement. For example, there should be more regular exchange among QA bodies.
Next, next. Mr. Charles Chong.
We are the Didong. We think the over enrollment incident is a problem of governance and management. It also shows a flaw in the planning of subdegree programs. Before reunification, education opportunity was scarce. A lot of people who cannot receive university uh play cannot get university places will have to go vocational. After the reunification, they the government added subdegree in order to boost up the tertiary education school places. But the administration has ignored the policy objective. Graduates don't have competitiveness, and the programs don't enjoy comparable status. Students just care about articulation. They close their eyes and choose whatever program that offers articulation. There is a lack of competitiveness. We have three proposals to make. First, we asked the government to review the positioning of subdegree programs so that it will not just focus on um economic commercial value. There should be a uniform quality assurance bodies to ensure that students so will not fall into choosing programs with no quality control. And there should be more emphasis placed on um our education development. Next is Mr. Cheng Chi Wei. Thank you.
Over enrollment of Lingnan University has caused a lot of problems. It has drawn public attention. I think the number of students affected is far more than what they have stated. If there is sufficient student facilities, then the case will not be reviewed. There is insufficient facilities in Lingnan to enable students to receive quality education and to graduate. How will the employers see this? If students from advanced diploma courses cannot continue their education, will they be employed by employers? I think there is a quick big question mark there. The Joint Quality Review Committee talked about setting up an independent regulator. The Education Bureau has been talking about this as well. What happened? Nothing. This has been mooted for a number of years, but there is no regulation. The eight uh ters the eight tertiary institutions or universities still continue to regulate themselves. And as a result, there is over enrollment. They will they will not disclose this fact among themselves. And as a result, students suffer. We're talking about money. What is the Education Bureau doing? Do you are are you expecting students not to study? What are they going to do after they've left school? To be coolies? Manual workers? I want the Education Bureau to seriously deal with this issue. I want Lingnan to learn the lesson and not to over-enroll anymore. How many seven years can they waste? Next. Mr. Chen Che K. Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to have my say. Back in twenty-oh-one, we have the first batch of students participating in the expanded tertiary education. Uh we are the Hong Kong College of Technology. We provide opportunities for um secondary school graduates, but there are a lot of problems. We need to do more. I would like to make three points. They are fundamentals, and they are my views. First, quality assurance. How can that be implemented? We see that for self-accreditation, before they get quality accreditation, uh they enroll a lot of students. And they have also lowered the admission criteria. Courses lasting for less than one year take in students that are below the educate the um the admission uh requirement. People lost confidence in tertiary education self um fin financed tertiary education programs. This in turn will affect the reputation of our of Hong Kong's education. I think the government and the relevant regulators will have to deal with the situation as opposed to. They should implement the recommendations on the rep from the report on Higher Education Review of the UGC to have a uniform quality assurance uh body to um consolidate all the different approaches and to tackle the problems at source, to prevent recurrence. Publix, the public have high expectations on publicly-funded institutions. But there is more than one institution who have over-enrolled students. With a decreasing student population, they should review the positioning and scale of the publicly-funded institutions. And they should expedite the uh amendment to the tertiary education ordinance. It was outdated. It poses a lot of limitations on publicly-funded and self-financed institutions. We thank members' concern. We ask legislators who show an interest to reach out to this uh to the institutions to get a better understanding. Next, Ms. Long Chan Fong. I am from Sahu Cheng Dai Se Gong Fu Hong Si Kim Fu Cheng Guan Ju Zhou. We are a concerned group. I am a registered social worker. Uh in October last year, through CCCU of the Polytechnic University and the website, we learned that self-financed subdegree social work program will stop in twenty-thirteen. This course has a history of twenty-eight years. It provides a alternate uh alternative pathway for people who want to study social work. It enjoys a good reputation. A lot there are a lot of applicants every year. So we see that it is well-recognized, and there is a great demand for the course. The reason for the termination of the course is that um the facilities are only open for full-time students. Self-financed um self-financed programs cannot use it. And the lease for the Telford Garden facility will expire soon. And so they don't want to have another uh two-year program of the associate degree of social work. But we know that the facilities can be used by self-financed program students. On the first of August, uh the first of the the eighth of January, we asked to meet the relevant body, but we were ignored. He's the person said that um the ASW is not under his purview. Yesterday, we received information that the course will continue. We see that the Education Bureau has failed to monitor this all the the offer of courses. When there are problems, these institutions refuse to talk to students and pass the buck. What can students do? People who are working need part-time courses so that they can further their education. In March, the funding from government will stop. So uh students in the course will have no job and no education. If they stop the course, a lot of people will be affected. Is there sufficient regulation on subdegree programs? Why don't they have to be responsible? How can institutions organize offer and stop courses without good cause? This is not a problem faced just by our program. A lot of other self-financed programs face the same problems. Self-financed programs. You we see that there are flaws when it comes to self-financed programs, and there is insufficient facilities.
Susan Ba Hong, thank you. I'm the the vice president of the Federation of Social Work Students. We've heard the businessman running the tertiary institutions. I believe that, Miss Lady Yu, probably have will have billions of dollars which will distribute among them. They are concerned about the survival of the institutions and whether or not they can continue to operate. So they are therefore highlighting finding faults with the others. Having had all the deputations, I think those representatives only talk about institutions. They didn't mention students. In our community, there is very limited scope for upward mobility for students. Even after we graduate, we are not guaranteed a secure job. So what has fundamentally gone wrong? Does Mr. Eddie Yu know that education has now become a business in Hong Kong? And when it is a viable business, they will offer the courses. If it is not viable, then they will close down those programs at any time they like. So is there a regulatory regime in place and is it being enforced? Talking about the social work courses, the earlier speaker already told you about the City U program. They can simply announce that the course will no longer be offered next year because of a lack of space. So the associate degree program is a very good channel for us to further our education. We have many people who have been in the social, been social to do for a long time, and they would relied on these associate degree program or part-time undergraduate programs to help them move up the ladder so that they will be able to serve in the social welfare sector. But the institutions treat these courses as a business, and they will simply offer these courses and close them down arbitrarily at any time. I myself have finished with the associate degree and have been moved up to a degree program. But this costs money. If the institution is so irresponsible and they close down any programs arbitrarily at their own will, then many people's plan to further education will be affected. So the Bureau should come up with a measure to lay down the conditions under which institutions can offer a new course and what are the conditions for the closing down of a course. And there should be detailed system in place. Well, all the deputations have now spoken. I'd like to ask the Deputy Secretary to respond to the points made by the deputations. Since we have limited time, so please be brief and concise. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to once again thank all the deputations for coming today, as well as the members for the valuable points that they've raised at our meeting today. On the subject of tertiary education, we all have our own views, and I think we've heard all your views, and we certainly take them back and consider them further. I'd just like to make one supplement. The administration all along has a total importance to the quality of tertiary institution. We've accepted the UGC's 2010 review on tertiary education. We are now exploring the possibility of setting up a single standardized quality assurance mechanism. We are now steadily adopting measures to enhance quality assurance. I know that going forward, I think next Monday, I think the committee will continue to discuss this subject. Perhaps I'll pause here and see whether there are any further questions. All right, it's now time for questions. May I ask how many members would like to speak? Please put up your hand so that I can work out the timing for each member. Mr. Abraham Shaq, Fernando Zheng, Ms. Chan Kao Lo, Ms. Helena Wong, and the Deputy Chairman. Anyone else? If not, well, since we must finish. We originally supposed to finish at one, but we've extended by 15 minutes. So shall I say, may I suggest three minutes for each members? Calling to Section 838 of our rules of procedures. If any member has any direct and indirect peculiar interest relating to the issue we discussed today, you should make a declaration. Mr. Abraham Shaq. Chairman, I have a simple question. I don't need three minutes. Having heard all the students and the representatives from the institutions, I'd like to ask a simple question. Regarding regulation of these associate degree programs, who is doing this? Is it the management of the universities or the council of the universities? If it is the council of the UGC-funded institutions, do they have to be accountable to government? For those which are not UGC-funded, how does the government regulate them? I'd like to declare also that I am a member of the Council and Court of the Hong Kong U. Secretary. Perhaps the Deputy Secretary can respond. Thank you. There is internal regulation within the institutions. When they offer the new course, there is an internal system. Normally, they have an academic committee. When planning is being made, they will need to consult with the board, and the board will then decide. Regarding internal supervision, we have three different mechanisms to ensure quality assurance. When a new program is offered, we would decide which mechanism should regulate the program. If it is non-UGC institutions, normally it would be the HKCAAVQ to decide, to check whether or not the institution has the ability to offer such courses. For the UGC courses, other than internal supervision, there is also the HACA. For associate degrees programs, we have the joint JQRCC. As the Deputy Secretary said, we are now considering the possibility of setting up an ultimate and standard, a single review structure to ensure consistency in the quality and also whether or not that would be fair for the institutions. We want to ensure that the system is also be credible in the eyes of the public. While I was asking about who is regulated, who is responsible for the so-called non-academic aspects? Could you use the Lingnan incident as an example? Could you explain? The two doctors are shoulders responsibility. Should council also bear the responsibility for what happened? First of all, internally, there is a supervision. When they offer a new course, they will have to first approve the plan. In reading the Lingnan report, every time a new course is being offered, there would need to be first of all internal consultation, and then the academic committee and the board will then have to decide. And this time, whether or not the person concerned follow the decision of the board is something else. Fernando Zheng.
Thank you. I also like to follow up on Mr. Abraham Shaq's question. First of all, I'd like to thank the deputations for coming. Having heard the two sessions of deputations, I think it is very clear that tertiary education in Hong Kong follows the principle of elitism. The government sticks on to the 80% quota. They use the examination to select a minority of students who will become the elites of our community for the others. Especially the lady from Lingnan University. She is talking about that they want to satisfy the needs of our young people. That's rather interesting. I thought that tertiary education should serve the needs of our community. We really want our young people to have more education so that they will be developed into a person of integrity, someone with critical thinking, and someone who can make a contribution in the community. In the course of the study, they will find out what they're interested in and find their own pathway. I thought that is the major value of tertiary institution. But now, I realized the governments will only select elites. Anyone who failed the exams or don't meet the standard will not receive the subsidies. The rest will be operated by the free market. Of course, the eight institutions will have an advantage when they offer these self-financing courses. Over enrollment is not an issue. Poor quality is not an issue. Basically, it has become simply a business. Isn't that sad? I thought that we really want our young people to receive more education. But these people have now become consumers. Since they need to make a living, and if they do not obtain proper qualification and title, then they are destined to simply, you know, poor prospects. So because of that, the universities are prepared to print all these certificates. The banks will print money. We will print the certificates in exchange for income. I also need to declare that my own university, the Polytechnic University, also is printing these certificates. So what is your question? First of all, I don't know whether the government has any vision regarding tertiary education. And looking at it from a more narrow perspective, we have all these governance issues. They have all become institutions printing certificates of money. They will try to enroll as many students as possible. I don't think they've answered Mr. Shaq's question. Deputy Secretary, what is the government's vision regarding tertiary education? I think it is our principle that we want to help Hong Kong train individuals who can contribute to the community. And we want to provide for a diversified system with multiple entry and exits. Under the new senior secretary system, we want to provide for more channels for people to receive education. Some of the deputations also asked whether or not all students in Hong Kong would need to receive a university education before we have a perfect education system. That's certainly something we can further discuss. But within the administration, and the secretary also said that we don't have unlimited resources. When there are resources, then we have to, we will, in the light of the expertise of the students and in the light of the interest, we'll try our best to help. But it doesn't mean that everyone would need to be admitted to university. What the government wants to do is to provide more channels, either through government subsidy or self-financial programs for them to continue with their education. Perhaps I'll pause here. Mr. Chan Kao Lo. Chairman, I'd like to declare that I am an associate professor of the Program on International Relations at the Baptist University. When I last spoke, Chairman, I set the whole question boils down to greed. The management of the universities, they see a business opportunity. As a result, they are now offering these programs. And you now have the new operators who are knocking at the door. They're trying to rig, they say these people are rigging the bed. I think the secretary has not answered my question. The government must shoulder the responsibility. Dr. Zheng's question, actually. I think when we talk about this 6% target, we didn't talk about values or visions. We only talk about the knowledge-based economy and so on, and we trusted everything to the market. These universities, since the government need to cut down their resources, and the government doesn't, and universities will not get any money to expand, they have to come up with ways to generate their own revenue. And these students, these victims, and their parents are the sources of your revenue. And it all boils down to this. That is, we've asked the administration many times why it does not seriously deal with the question of subvention for university places. After so many years, it's only increased the number of university places by a few hundred. There are many things which Hong Kong should be proud of. But one thing, as an educator, I'm ashamed of is the lack of commitment on the part of the government. And then you leave it to the market and end up with all these malpractices. So I think you need to, even if we talk about coming up with a good regulatory mechanism and so on, even if you are transparency, you still operate under a system of capitalism. I think you should allow the consumers to have more information so that we can cut down on the size of the over enrollment. The official told us that there is regulation. Everybody knows that there is regulation. I don't think they say there's a regulation. The question is whether or not we have good regulation. The answer is that we don't have good regulation. It's obvious in the case of Lingnan, they have a system in place, but they bypass the system and they recruit the students first. It's all because of greed. So I'd like to ask you the same question, Deputy Secretary. You want to listen to more views. But my question is, when is the government willing to come forward to shoulder this responsibility and explain clearly what is his vision on regulation? Don't just listen to the views of the trade, and you will provide as much supervision as they are able to accept. So could you, okay, why didn't you allow time for the administration to respond? I must clarify that the SARG is a responsible administration. For whatever happens in our community, we have a duty to resolve those problems. In the incident involving Lingnan University and also in respect of the submissions made by the deputations, we understand that, we realize that there are many problems relating to the regulation of tertiary institutions. Deputations also talk about the recognition or credibility of the sub-degree programs and so on. These are the things that we need to respond to. But I don't think I can give you quick answers. But I can assure Mr. Chen that we are a responsible government. We'll try to best resolve these problems once they are identified. Next, Helena Wong. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had to attend another meeting next door, and I missed part of the discussions. But I've read all the papers. According to my observation, the self-financing tertiary programs, what we see is that there are different systems of regulation. The situation is out of control. Of course, for a member of DPA to talk about control is rather odd. However, what I want to say is that we really respect and embrace academic freedom and autonomy for the institutions. Despite that, however, it doesn't mean that the government and the public doesn't have any role to play in terms of regulation. We're not talking, instructing what the professor should say in the classroom, how he should conduct research. We're talking about the governance. Whether or not the governance is transparent and open, whether or not it's based on a reasonable system. Is it accountable enough? And for such, for the regulatory mechanism, is it, you know, does it follow democratic principles? Are there efforts made to ensure quality and so on? For these self-financed tertiary institutions, while they call themselves self-financing, but according to the paper, and it's one of the paper in fact, which are the areas which the government will have to pay? Land grant, subsidy for quality improvement, grant and loan? We're talking about public funds here. Obviously, the government has a role to play, that is to represent the public to ensure that all the courses offered by these different institutions. What kind of courses are they? In the 2010 Report on Review of Tertiary Education, it is said that eventually we need to set up a single quality insurance mechanism. I've asked the secretary this question, but he's gone now. I asked him when the administration will do it. Since I think the committee has published this report, I'm sure they've, well, now we have all these eight institutions, and then you have all these different committees, JQRCC and so on. They say they want peer review. And then you have the HKCAAVQ. And the Bureau said, we're going to set up a tripartite liaison committee. The three parties can sit together, together with the JQRCC. You talk about this four-party, you know, committee. So what role does the Bureau play here? Can you really, you know, ensure that there is a regulation and how this joint committee? I think the single mechanism was proposed in 2010. I haven't yet finished. You've already used up your three minutes. Deputy Secretary.
Uh, Secretary. Has mentioned in the paper. We want to adopt a step-by-step approach and to have even ultimately a four-party mechanism in the end. And we do carry out study and on issues and we issue morning letters to institutions that have violated rules. When it comes to quality assurance, we do hope that our mechanism can adopt the same unified criteria and be more transparent. And looking ahead, how do we move towards creating such a unified body? The Education Bureau has already proposed to HECOM the setting up of a task force to study the timetable for setting up such a unified body. But we agree, academic freedom and institutional autonomy should not be the excuses for institutions not to be accountable. We however do hope that we can be realistic and through a step-by-step approach to reach a consensus on reaching a timetable and the finding the way forward. In the first half of this year, the task force is supposed to begin his work. Last one. Vice Chairman Yip Ki Nuen. Chairman, I think we all know that we have a serious problem here and there's much public grievance. And it's also affecting reputation of the sector. It's all because our entire planning, vision and government's monitoring has got problems. Quite a number of educators also have voiced concern. So all these result in this serious situation. Abraham Shack asked me whether I can move a motion, asking the government and institutions to come up with an answer. I believe maybe we don't have time today to deal with that. I think Monday during our meeting, I believe we can discuss that motion. And now I also like to ask the government two questions. One is, as mentioned by the student or former student of the City U social work program, it seems that City U and Education Bureau have their own versions of reasons. So can you come back to us and let us know what really went on there? And secondly, about Lingnan's latest inquiry report, I'm very concerned that in the AD programs, how are we going to solve the problem of the AD programs? Students, there are one hundred and twenty-three students who were admitted into the program even though they failed to meet the minimum requirements. And whether the program will be recognized in future or will it be recognized under the qualifications framework? I don't know whether the bureau or Lingnan, you know, your representatives can respond to this. And how are you going to follow up on the issue? Deputy Secretary.
Okay, Chairman. On City U's Associate Degree Social Work Associate Degree Program, yesterday we had issued a letter to City U saying that we support City U offering the program in AC2, in its academic building two. And we will actually inform the three university in writing. In other words, the bureau thinks that having gone through the papers, we will allow for visibility so that the program can be continued. Of course, it's up to City U in the end to decide whether to open the program again. As for Lingnan, I'll make a brief point and then Lingnan can respond. On the HD programs, Education Bureau is very, very concerned. In December, we wrote to Lingnan explaining our concern about its articulation arrangements and student admissions requirements and how it's going to provide high-quality education. We want to get clear answers from them and we're waiting for his reply. Ms. Siu, would you like to respond?
Yes, on HD program, the one hundred and twenty-three students who have not met the entry requirements, we have arranged for some teachers to take media, media measures to help these students catch up. We hope that hopefully soon we can help them after finishing the program to be articulated. You know, to, to be eligible for AD qualification.
Thank you. Because of time constraint, I think we can only ask for one question in the second round. That's Helena Wong. Two minutes, please. Thank you, Chairman. Just then, well, you mentioned the three, four parties or three party task force. You said that so in the future, are you going to hand over the responsibility to the HKAVC? See? But have you thought that the council itself has got conflict of interest in terms of the funding receives and its role? In twenty eleven report, it had an income of sixty-one million dollars, of which forty-six million dollars came from assessment and consultancy services. That is, the institutions gave money to the council to validate programs so that the council can be maintained. Whereas the government only gave it five point six million dollars last year. And now you're asking the council to actually be validating programs. But then you're asking the council to ask for, these people gave it money. You know, ask them to, to submit programs for validation. But there is a potential conflict of interest there. Are you in the wrong direction, giving the council so much more responsibilities? Are we in the wrong direction, Deputy Secretary?
Yes, the council is a self-funded, self-financing organization. Is validation fees a set on a cost recovery basis? And each institution, based on our qualifications framework support scheme, each institution can apply for recur or getting back the cost. So therefore, the council has its role to play and is the only independent statutory validation body. So we feel that it is able to do it professionally speaking. And there's also all kinds of support for institutions and the council has to set fees to recover costs. So I don't see there's any, any conflict of interest. Two more minutes. Yip Ki Nuen, one more minute for you. Yeah, for one minute. Just then, we talked about City U and Lingnan. I hope that the bureau can do, you have to take full up actions. You can't rely on students to negotiate with universities. I think the bureau needs to play a more proactive role in talking to, for example, City U. And Lingnan, I think your answer didn't solve the issue. All the students who are not qualified, they couldn't really meet the requirements for secondary graduation. So I think the bureau should take a more proactive role to talk to Lingnan, for example, offering them Project E Gene and so forth to help them meet the requirements. And how do we solve the issue of level four under qualifications framework? I hope that the bureau can fill up and give us a timetable on when you can report back to us the progress. Okay, time flew. Well, of course, the bureau will say that it will take full up action. Okay, time's up. Let me all, let me thank you all for attending today's meeting. If you have further comments, please after this meeting, give us to them, give them to us in writing. And if you want to make any submissions, please write down your names. Thank you all, members. Our next final meeting will be held on Monday, four thirty. Please be punctual. Thank you.